Okay, I call this meeting to order and would like to welcome those of you who are visiting here with us today. You know, and we will go ahead and...
This is my...
And anyway, we'd like to welcome those of you who are here visiting with us today. We will go ahead and begin our work session today. We would like to excuse Mr. Jacob Gerch. He is not able to be with us today, our other board member. But other than that, everybody is present. So, our first item of business today is our introduction of our college and career advisors. And so, Ms. Jen Horowitz, if you want to come forward and have them...
So, we planned a little more than an introduction, is that okay?
Oh, sure.
Okay, so I brought my posse. So, you'll notice possibly that we started with four the first time you met this crew, and it has doubled. And there are new faces, and so I invited them to come today. And I said, "Just tell them a little bit about what's going on at your school, and then what your focus is." And some of them are really nervous, and some of them are... You won't be able to... You know, Doug will have to give them the... So, we're gonna start with Pocatello High School, and I'll let these two introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Newsome. I am a college and career advisor at POCI. I've been there for... This is my second year.
I'm Kelly Hile, and I am the longest-serving college and career advisor by a whole three weeks over this one. So, yep, we've got the experience.
And you're at Pocatello.
Uh-huh, yep.
So, we just... We made quick notes, 'cause Jen said, "Keep it short." So, we made quick notes. So, some of the things we'd like to highlight, just since having the college and career advisors in the buildings, go ahead with the...
So, our focus really has been to kind of elevate the public's understanding of what goes on at POCI. We do have a large number of students who are first-generation college-bound, which I was one of them, so I understand how scary that can be when your parents don't have a clue what they're doing. So, that's really where I kind of try to focus my time and energy, is getting those kids ready to go, jump them through all those hoops that we all know have to be jumped through in order to go to college. So, with that in mind, one of the things that Jennifer and I have spent most of our time really focusing on is increasing the number of our students who have been fully admitted to colleges. So, as of right now, we have roughly 180-ish... I haven't looked at our numbers today. Students who are fully accepted to ISU, and that was before, call it... Or Christmas break, so our numbers are probably a little bit higher than that. That's the most we've ever had at this stage of the game. For us, the reason why we wanted to get that acceptance up is because, as you guys know, the scholarship system that ISU operates opens January 2nd for incoming freshmen. And so, we wanted our kids to have as much access to scholarships as was humanly possible. With that being said, we are at a half-million dollars of ISU-awarded scholarships for our students. That's the highest POCI has ever had at this stage of the game. That's only round four. So, we anticipate by the end of this year, probably 600,000, maybe even more than that, which is excellent. And that's just those merit-based scholarships that are automatically granted to students for applying by the priority deadline. So, we're super excited about that, because that's an incredible amount of money that has been awarded to our kids.
So, we have sold... Idaho offers an opportunity scholarship to Idaho students. And last year, so previous to this opportunity scholarship, these kiddos typically aren't aware of this, but last year, we had every kid that met their qualifications for the opportunity scholarship, we had them all apply for it. Twenty kids from our building last year were awarded the opportunity scholarship if they went to an Idaho school. Prior to that, only two kids the year before had been awarded that scholarship, and before that, we don't know, 'cause we weren't there. And it's a $1,500 scholarship.
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred. So, scholarship. So, 20 kids in our building were awarded that scholarship. Transcripts, just based off of our registrars, last year when we were in there, she said... She came to us one day, and she said that prior to us being in the building, she said, "I sent maybe one or two transcripts out a year to colleges." She said, "I thought kids weren't going to college anymore." She said, "This year, I send at least two to three transcripts out a day." This year, we sent the transcripts out. We've sent more than 500 transcripts out for students, so...
And then, the other thing that we really have focused on this year is increasing access for students to career. With that being said, we hope to have an apprenticeship kind of event here in the next few months. We actually invited some of our apprenticeship program people from the Iron Works and those kind of organizations to come talk to our kids back in October, and the response was phenomenal. I had like 15 kids within an hour of that presentation knocking on my door. So, they're actually gonna come back here in the next few months and basically do kind of a recruiting/interviewing process, get those kids in the door to apprenticeships, which is just a phenomenal opportunity for these kids to have access to a living-wage job. In fact, the one gentleman told... Showed me the breakdown of the income. Kids will be making more than she and I make in this particular job, and I have two bachelor's degrees. So, I'm just, you know, I was like, "Kids, do this, 'cause it's way better to go this route than to be in the debt that my husband and I are." So, we're super excited about the apprenticeship program. We've met some other people who are offering one. So, Bayer, for example, is launching an apprenticeship program, so we're gonna reach out to that company and have them come speak to our kids, so that we're kind of making that whole rounded approach for our students.
Did you just close it up?
Sure.
Okay. And then, last but not least, just dual credit. The kiddos, the number of kiddos that are taking advantage of dual credit. And we also have, it's been an on-campus pilot program where kids can go on campus to... And sit in on the college classes for the dual credit. And it's been one of those things for us, that we get the word out to the kids, and they come to us, and they're taking advantage of it. And ISU called today, and they said that we've had the highest number from our building take advantage of the dual credit classes on campus. The kids love it, and they love that opportunity. And it's just nice just to have the people in the building to be able to be a resource for these kiddos to go to. So, I think that sums it up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
We really appreciate what you do, Sam.
Thank you. So, next we'll have Highland High School, and we have a heck of a turnover in this position, because these are some really talented people.
Oh, I was gonna say...
Really talented people.
We're both...
And so, and so, both of them started, actually, you started last year.
Last year, on the 29th of January.
Right, so she's almost got a year under her belt.
Yes.
Sarah hasn't quite done that. So, I'll let them take off. This is Highland.
So, my name's Amanda Blair. As you know, I've almost been there about a year, and it's been a wonderful year. I love Highland so much. Some of the things we've been up to at Highland, we were able to plan a college visit to the College of Southern Idaho and Boise State University. And we even got to take the students to a Boise State football game. It was my major goal to get them on campus during a time period like this, so they can experience the energy of a college campus, because there's nothing really like it. You can't read it from a port... Like a... What is it? A brochure. You kind of have to be there to experience it, and I was really... I was so happy that I got all 36 there, and I got all 36 home in one piece. And yeah, so that was one thing we've done. We've brought kiddos to Experience ISU, those that were interested in going there, and it's helped a lot of them decide what they wanted to do. Your turn, sorry.
My turn. Also, I wanted you to know a little bit about how we came to these positions. I would want you to know that Amanda graduated with her MPA from ISU just in the spring. I have worked in higher ed for about 20 years. So, we bring, I think, an interesting blend of experiences to the position, which I think has been valuable to the staff at Highland and to our students. We've had particular luck at Highland with the Applied Idaho Program. Not everyone is meant to go to college or needs to go to college, but how lucky our students are to have the full array of post-secondary opportunities. So, whether you want training or certification, four years of college, or a medical degree, you know, you have that opportunity in Idaho, which I think is unique, actually, among many states. So, we've got about 90% of our students who are indicating post-secondary training, education, certification, or whatever, which I think is something about which we can all feel good and proud. The three most popular institutions are ISU, of course, Boise State, and CSI, which I think is important for you to know. Our students, as they are at Highland and Century, bring a blend of backgrounds and experiences and challenges. So, just this morning, we have a young woman who is not living with her biological family because it's just not a good situation for her, a young man who has challenges with his status but wants to go to college, and one of our students whose mom was very sick with cancer was just accepted to the honors college at ISU. So, we're feeling like we are helping them find opportunities that I think are really important for them and for the state and for the school district. And we will celebrate our seniors with some sort of a celebration or send-off or something. Come June, we want every senior to be recognized, so, thank you.
It's okay, you'll wanna know this. So, you know, I know Sarah from this setting, and you know, I go to the swim meets. And lo and behold, who's down there timing? Actually...
I'm learning to be a timer, yes, right, yeah. Random fact about Sarah McLarson. Yeah, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, finally, Century High School.
Hello.
And Essa is our newest college and career advisor, and she's been here how long?
Three months.
Three months.
Yeah.
So, my name is Ashley Ames, and I started actually what Amanda did. We got hired at the same time, so I'm almost to my year mark.
And I'm Essa Temple. Three months.
So, I guess the first thing we wanna start with at Century, our big focus has been that every student has a plan. When they leave Century High School, every senior needs to be confident and happy with what they've chosen. So, we don't care if that means they start a career, they go to trade school, they go to college, whatever they decide, they are confident and happy in that decision. So, we have tried to meet with every senior. I know we got pretty far last year, and we've started this year. 300 seniors is a lot, but as we pull them in and start talking to them, it's fascinating about what they wanna do with their lives. We had a young man actually give us a thank you note, and he said, "I really appreciate that you've prepared me for college. I don't think I would've been this disciplined without someone like on my tail every day calling me from class and making sure I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing." This young man was also enrolled in dual credit, which you've heard from the other two high schools that we do as well. And at Century, in the first two trimesters, these kids have done 2,661 dual credits for college, which if you times that by three high schools, that's amazing. And between what the state has given them and what a college credit actually costs, these kids have saved over $700,000 just at our high school. So, I think that's definitely a testament to what we can do and what we can do for these kids, that $700,000 is not a burden on them when they go to college or when they go out to work.
We've also taken multiple campus visits. We've been to CSI, and we've been to ISU twice, once for Experience ISU, once for College Technology Tour. We're going to Boise State next week, next Friday. We're going to Utah State in February, and hopefully Beaver State in March. And in April, on the SAT day for the juniors, we're taking all of our freshmen, all 300 of them, to the College Technology at ISU.
For just a lot.
Yeah. All 300 of them. It'll be an exciting challenge. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, our last two college and career advisors are really the newest college and career advisors, and I told them they didn't have to talk, but I'll let them talk. But I'm gonna explain what the deal was. So, the state has steadily increased the amount of money they provide for our college and career advising programs. And one of the things that they've also done is that the Higher Ed Task Force, along with the Workforce Development Task Force that the governor had, both of those groups did the recommendations that we be dipping down into the middle school and be providing college and career advising, and making sure that every one of our students have a four-to-six-year plan. And that presents a particular challenge, because you can hear our other six college and career advisors talk about the things they're doing in our high schools, let alone the work that we need to be doing with especially our seventh and eighth grade students. And so, this year, when we realized we had enough money, we went ahead and planned to hire two middle-school college and career advisors. And so, we were lucky enough to tap into Amy Ballowander, I always say it wrong, and then Travis Lee, who has a really easy name. And Travis is... He just barely started.
Today was my seventh day.
And so, Travis is serving Franklin and Irving, and Amy is serving Alameda and Hawthorne. And I will let... Amy's been around a little bit.
Been around a month. So, a little bit more than Travis. So, I'm working between both Alameda and Hawthorne, and what I've been doing right now is just trying to get to know the staff and the students as well, just to see what the staff think their needs are with these students, but also learning from the other college and career advisors, what they, you know, what they do, as well as what would be helpful, having the students previous to getting to high school, kind of be aware of, and their, you know, their parents as well. So, yeah, it's just kind of, you know, it's pretty new right now, so we're trying to figure it out as we go, but it's been... It's been nice having somebody else, too, that's kind of navigating it at the same time, so...
They have some ideas off of each other, so it's been really nice to have that.
And we work really closely in tandem with the counselors in all of our settings, and so, you know, and that's another thing that I think is helping with the success of this program. So, there's our college and career advisors.
Well, you know, I remember when you first brought this program to us, and it's really wonderful, and I do have to thank our legislators for the amount of money that they have started to invest in this program, because our poor counselors can't do it all, and we've heard today the successes that you are causing to happen and helping our young people plan.
And their parents.
Right, because I think so often, so many have no idea what's even out there.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Amy Newsome. Okay, next up is our calendar committee report and our proposed 2019-20 school district calendars.
Right, I thought I... We have it ready, so a draft ready for you to look at for... We'll bring it to the board next... At our next... At your next meeting next week for approval, but just some things that I wanna highlight and see if we've missed anything, or any comments that you might have on this. I did send out a survey in December for the calendar. We ended... And you'll see it's in your packet there, so we've summarized the results of that. As the staff responses, there were 596 responses from staff, which I thought... I was just so pleasantly surprised. It's amazing how you can get a lot of responses on something that must be really important to them. But you'll see, there was a good... There was a good spread there of teachers and classified staff, administrators, and as far as elementary, middle, high school, a good representation from all of those levels. Then, when it came down to which do you prefer, which is really always, do you start early or do you start late? And I think we had worded it that in our last one, but this one, a little more specifically, do we start at the week before Labor Day or two weeks before Labor Day? And you'll see that there was pretty much a split, so that really isn't... It's like, there were... Half the people are going to be happy, and half the people are not going to be happy. So, I think that's what that says. So, 43% wanted it to start... Oh, my goodness. Wanted it... 43% wanted it to start the week before, but the 10% that had the other responses were... They wanted it after Labor Day, and that was pretty consistent, that all of the other in both the staff and the parents were in the... Starting it after Labor Day. Then you'll... Then I asked, you know, "How important are these to you?" And so, they could say from a one to a five, for a week off for school for spring break. So, about 2/3 of them said that was really important to them, and then of the highest importance, five. And then, a week off for Thanksgiving, 50%, less than 50% said that. And then, more than 2/3 were two weeks off for the winter break. And then, after that, you'll see Tara, my secretary, she compiled the responses there. And so, we just kind of looked for some trends, and knowing that we had 596 people who completed the survey, which ones were the most common. And it's aligning with ISU probably had throughout that had the most... That comment was made the most. Then, when we came to the parent survey, we sent that out through Infinite Campus, and so, they were able to... They got it... They were able to get an alert that they could go to their email and complete it on Infinite Campus, and we had 1,318 responses. When we did this before, we were closer to 600, so I was... It doubled, and I think we have a really good way to communicate with parents through Infinite Campus. And you'll see that there were, you know, elementary, middle, and high school representation. Parents could mark all the levels that they had students. And again, we saw that two weeks before was 58%, and then the others, a lot of them wanted... About 10% wanted them to be after Labor Day, and 31% that week before, so that wanted a later start. Then, it followed... It mirrored the staff in that the highest percent... 50% over 50% wanted a week off for spring break, less than 25% wanted a week off for Thanksgiving as their highest priority, and then 50... I guess they all probably wanted that maybe, but anyway, as a priority. And more than 50% wanted two weeks... Was a high priority, have two weeks at winter break. And then, I categorized the responses there so that you could see, 'cause there were lots of responses, and tried to look at the ones that were the most common. Again, you saw that ISU, 57 responses there were to align that with ISU, and that seems to be important to, you know, our community, even though that's out of 1,318 people who responded. So, we use that information as we started to develop that calendar. And then, there's other things that we know are important and that we bring up every time, and we make sure that we align things, and that is, we have to trimesters. We wanna be sure that our trimesters, you know, they're about even all the way across. Graduation, we found out that that was important to have it close to a Friday, and maybe not on a Monday. And record day, close to a weekend. We listened, how about that? Record day, close to a weekend. You know, the days off in the middle of the week, you know, that wasn't that... Didn't work real well. We look at it, what... How will it impact attendance? Whenever we put a record day in, how will this impact attendance? If we put it the middle of the week, are we going to lose students on Monday, Tuesday, because we have record day and they're off on a Wednesday? So, we try to take all of that into consideration, as well as other things such as spring sports, Wednesday. When do they give the AP exams, and do they have to have makeup spy? What about our testing schedule for our ISAT testing schedule? All of those have to come into consideration as we're creating this calendar, which, you know, I just... You just don't realize how many different factors there are. That's why on our committee, we have representation from, you know, elementary, secondary. We have classified staff, so from principals, teachers, so that we can get a bunch of different views and have everybody look at it through their lens. So, we have to work with 172 instructional days, and it's negotiated in that we have three staff development days, three and a half record checkout days, a prep day, an orientation day. And then, it's not in negotiations, but we've had included in there, we brought back in a couple of years ago, two parent-teacher conference days. And so, it's 188 and a half contract days for teachers. So, as you look at the calendar that we're proposing here, you'll... Just a few things here that I'll go through. The staff would come back on August 20th. That would be a week of staff orientation, professional development. Students would come on a Monday, and, you know, we've gone back and forth with that. Sometimes, it's easier if they come back later in the week, but we have to work around a lot of other things, too. And then, there would be the 3rd and 4th of October would be off for parent-teacher conferences on the 3rd and professional development on the 4th. The end of the first try would be November 15th, and then the 18th would be a record day. So, we tried to put it with a week in there, even though Thanksgiving was coming up. And we have Thanksgiving being three days off, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Winter break goes from the 23rd of December through January 3rd, so it's two weeks there. And then, midterms are the 14th of January. Now, we're struggling with where to put parent-teacher conference. It is a dilemma, because at the elementary level, they meet with every parent, and even if you have a classroom of 30 students and you're looking at 15 minutes for every parent, you can do the math, that's a pretty tight day. And so, we have to take into consideration that it's going to be a pretty tight day for, you know, especially for elementary level, where they try to set up appointments and meet with them. And so, we're still bouncing this around. Right now, I... We've come up with several different days. They need a time to set... To sit on it and to think about what day would be the best. Right now, it looks like what's winning in the vote is the 16th, having the evening of the 16th being parent-teacher conferences, the morning of the 17th, 'cause we know that we need to accommodate working parents also, and then having teachers have the afternoon of the 17th off. So, that's what we're looking at right now, instead of this 28th down here, which is, you know, out of alignment even with midterms. So, we're... It was a dilemma that we could not get settled in our meeting right before the winter break. Then, you'll notice we've... As you go through the rest of it, we have a record day on a Friday, the 28th of February. We've aligned our spring break with ISU with a week off. The last day of school would be on the 28th, which is a Thursday of May, and the 29th would be a graduation day, and it's a teacher record day. Then, teachers would have a half-day checkout on the 1st of June. So, that's what we're proposing at this time, and if it's, you know, we're... If you see anything that we need to look at, or through your eyes now, if you see anything, then please let us know, and we'll make some adjustments before we bring it to the board for the next.
You know, the only thing I saw when I read through this, a lot of comments were about the week off for Thanksgiving, you know, that I saw, and then I heard... I heard comments this year from people about all the time after, the 1st of January, you know, that they didn't know what to do with their kids that week. I mean, I did hear how a lot of parents were scrambling with things, you know, and businesses were telling me, "Yeah, we have all these kids..." 'Cause parents didn't realize they were gonna be home all the rest of the week, you know, or different things. So, I don't know, and yet I... So, I looked and wondered if there was any way we could give another day, like the 26th of November, and take a day after New Year's, and yet, some people, I realize, are gonna wanna be gone and not come back, you know, until then, so... I realize it's a dilemma, but I was just trying to...
It is, and that's something that we did have some discussion, you know, have discussions about. And then, if you took the 26th off, then we were worried that our attendance on the 25th would be...
Would be...
Would be... No, you know, I mean, people would be taking that off. So, that's... So, we kind of balanced that, and then we went back to... We saw those comments, and then we looked at the number of those comments, and then yet, when we looked at the graph, you know, that when we asked them specifically, which is it of high importance to you or not? So, you know, the Thanksgiving was, you know, less than 50% said that it was...
Right.
Yeah, so I... We balanced that, too, Jackie. We read those, too, and wondered, you know, how to...
And I don't know how... Just like you say, part of the people you'll please and part of the people you won't.
Well, and I know that ISU's off for that week, and I know some of the surrounding districts are off. We looked at trying to put... We had a profession... A record day, but our record... That would put the record day too far out of alignment with the end of the trimester. If you... And 'cause some of them at the others, the surrounding districts, one of them put a record day on a Monday, so teachers would come on that Monday, and then they had... Everybody had Tuesday off, and so, but we... But it was just seemed to be a little bit out of alignment there.
I love the comments that said they wanted to start after Labor Day and then have two weeks off for this, two weeks for this, a week for this, and then be done before Memorial Day.
Yeah. Well, I... We could.
And I just smiled and think, and thought, "How... And how do you propose that?"
Yeah, you couldn't have those dates... Well, and then, you know, it seemed to be... I was surprised at the importance that it had when, you know, over 2/3 said it was of high importance to have that two weeks off at Christmas, you know? So, I don't know. We can... We can look at that. If that's important to you, we can go back and look and see...
No, I just... I just wondered if you'd considered that, you know, and it sounds like you did.
Yeah, we had quite a lengthy meeting, and you know...
I can imagine.
Yeah. And we've gotten to where we know some of the things that we need to anticipate, so, you know, like record day and all. So, we... What happens is, we come up with a draft calendar to start from, otherwise, we don't start from scratch every time, and then we say, "How do we go in and what was not maybe And then we say, how do we go in and what, what was not maybe so good this time? We had some funky things in our calendar. We always do, you know, it's just kind of the way it is. And as the calendar shifts over day, then it, it always ends up being just a little bit different.
Can you kind of tell us the makeup of your committee?
Uh-huh. We, we have, so I have, I, I have two elementary principals. I have a kindergarten teacher and a, an intermediate, a fourth grade teacher on that committee. There's a middle school teacher and a middle school principal. There's a high school teacher, a high school counselor, which she gave us some really good, you know, perspective on the testing part. High school principal, there are two of them on that committee. I think one was able to be there. There is a, a person that is, an ancillary person, a school psych, so sees across all grade levels and is in, you know, all buildings. There, there are the PEA reps, and they send a rep from each of those levels. So in addition to the teachers that are the reps, we have an elementary PEA teacher rep, a middle PEA teacher rep, and a secondary PEA teacher rep. Jan's on it, I'm on it.
Do you have any parents on that?
You know, we did, and I had considered that, and I have in the past. And what I did is I, I felt that sending out that survey kind of got, had that input there.
Had the input from the survey.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And that that was a way that we could.
Could involve.
Mm-hmm.
So do you feel like a dead luck?
Yeah. Well, and then, you know, things would negotiate, the last few years have been interesting, because as we negotiated more days back into the calendar, that's put a whole different, you know, twist to things. It was easier the first year, when I was the first year in this job, and, you know, we had taken days away. We were looking at, what, nine days, less? And so it was much easier to have days off here and there, because we were going to school less days.
And I was much happier to see graduation on Friday.
We, we thought you would be.
I was still going to hear about that, I know, this year.
And, and, you know, we had that discussion last, because we thought we were doing, you know, it's so hard to get it all in, just, you know, and we thought, well, Monday, that'll be better than a Wednesday, or, you know. But anyway, we did work on that and we kind of set that one first and then kind of worked backwards from there.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. And then next, I'm on next for just kind of an update on where our thoughts are on some kindergarten issues. So as you'll probably remember, and I don't know if several of you were on the board probably at that time, it was about eight or nine years ago, we switched from an alternate day, from a half-day, everyday kindergarten schedule to the alternate schedule. And it was a financial decision, based on the fact that the state was making cuts, one of them being midday busing cuts. They cut out reimbursement for field trips, reimbursement for that midday busing. Well, we're now at a different point. And they, they will reimburse, the state will reimburse midday busing for, like, our kindergarten students. They reimburse field trips and they reinstated some of those. So it just seemed like it was the right time to look at what is in the best interest of our learners. Do we go alternate day or do we go to a half-day kindergarten schedule? So what, so what I've done is I started in November and I just brought together groups of teachers. So I had divided them into about four different groups, and I just went out and I met with them. So all of the kindergarten teachers in about three or four schools, I'd meet with them and just say, you know, what do you see? What are the pros and what are the cons? It was really interesting, because as I did that, only about three or four of them had even taught in that half-day, everyday kindergarten. So there was just, I, I was shocked. I, I thought, well, it didn't seem like that long ago, and yet they were all fairly new to the profession or to the kindergarten. So it was interesting when we had the perspective of, of a, of a person who had taught half-day on those focus groups, so that they could kind of explain from their perspective of, of what worked and what didn't. So basically, you know, as I summarize that, what came about was, you know, you could guess. You could, you know, anticipate what the comments would be. The pros for a half-day, everyday would be is consistency. You know, they don't have to wonder, is this my Monday to come? Oh, let's see, I haven't, I came last Wednesday, but we didn't have Friday and it wasn't my Monday. And then a week later, here you are again, you know. So there would be consistency there. There'd be consistency for learning and there'd be consistency for attendance. And so that came out as being one of the, you know, one of the biggest benefits of a half-day, everyday, you know, kindergarten schedule. Yet, they weren't, the teachers there, they haven't ever taught that way. They were struggling with thinking, well, what would be, how would I do this? I don't think I could get in as much, as much curriculum if I, if I only had them for two hours and forty-five minutes. I don't know how I'd be able to do that, you know. When, when would I intervene or have interventions for students? Because that's what I do in the afternoon. If somebody doesn't get it in the morning, then I have time in the afternoon in order to be able to meet with that student and work with them and, and help them fill in any gaps. So those comments were made, they, you know, they're used to the structure that they have. They could see some benefits in, you know, you set up for one day, you get it, you know, you get a day off, you can set up for the next day instead of, and midday, they, they didn't see that as, some of them saw it as a little bit of a problem. And others didn't quite as much. So there were just quite a few different comments made on, you know, what it might be like. They weren't ready to jump in and say, okay, let's, let's go, we're ready for it, but they weren't totally resistant. They could see that that consistency piece would be there. And over and above, even, even one focus group that really did not, you could tell that that was not where their heart was, they had to say that that consistency would be, you know, they'd be able to build relationships and that consistency would be there by meeting students every day. So what I'm going to do next is I'm going to send out a survey. And I'll get with Courtney, so that we'll get it out to parents. And just to get their input, what do they see as the benefits? What do they see as some of the downfalls? What kinds of things have we not taken into consideration? If we, if we do make a change to this, because that's really important. I'm sure that there's things out there, you know, that, that we haven't thought about. You know, we, we know that the transportation department could do it, the food service, we could make it work there. It'll take some changes and some work if we decide to go that way. But we need to get their input and then, you know, meet back with the teachers again. So I'm looking at having, making, having us make a decision maybe in February, so that we could be well-prepared for next fall with that.
Well, I'm glad you're looking at that, because, you know, change is hard for teachers. And if these teachers have all been on this program, but I, I was around and I remember when they changed it and how much the teachers and parents all complained because of the lack of consistency and the kids not, not getting to come every day and, and the problems that that created. So this group maybe hasn't seen that, you know, but, but it was very true. Better answer maybe all day, every day.
Yes, absolutely, that would be, you know. And, you know, we could find the room, you know, that's always one of them, it's like, okay, what about facilities if we went that way? But you know what, we'd, we'd make it work. We, I'm sure that every one of them would love that, yeah.
Especially now that we have the funding for that, because that's all that.
The busing.
Changed that, you know, so.
Funding for the busing, for the transportation.
Yeah, the transportation.
Yeah, yeah, it's time. It's, we need to look at it and we need to explore what's going to be in the best interest of our students, so.
That's right, and that's what, that's what's paramount, what will help the students.
It is. Mm-hmm. That's what sells it. And you know what, we have wonderful teachers that, that know that, you know, whatever, whatever it takes to make it the best for their learners is what they're going to do.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Reed, the report on the hall meeting.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board, Dr. Howell. It still seems like it's appropriate to say Happy New Year, since we haven't seen you since last year. Including your packet is a summary of our first meeting that was held on December thirteenth with Homo Architects. I know that most of you were there in attendance for that meeting there. I thought we had a great first meeting. There were certainly a lot of ideas expressed and, and opinions given in regard to the different designs and concepts. I just wanted to emphasize a couple of things in regard to those minutes there that I think that are important for us to be mindful of. First of all, as we began our discussion and as we started talking about getting into some of the things that we were looking at trying to accomplish with this wonderful project, which will happen at Pocatello High School, was really what are our goals? And I think that that's really important for us to not only remember, but to come back and revisit. And so I just want to restate them for the record. When we first started talking about considering this project, we, we asked ourselves, why are we doing this? You know, what's the purpose and the intent behind it? And one of the things that is different, a little bit different this year than it has been in, in prior years, and that is the kind of upbeat with student safety. We've done that across the entire district. We've, we've locked all of the doors now. You have to come to a central part of the school there to get buzzed in, to come through and show identification. And student safety across the nation has become a big, big issue with some of the instances that have happened. And so that was one of our first goals that we had, was to increase student safety and to enclose the buildings. Pocatello High School is one of those schools that, to get from what we call Unit One to Unit Two, there's no way to get there other than going outside one way or the other. The second goal that we had come up with was that if we were able to enclose the buildings, that we ought to look very seriously at improving our ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act accessibility to those buildings. Right now, Pocatello High School is only accessible to the auditorium area and the, what we call the pit basketball area there and the, and the new palace area there, which is the, the main performance gym. And the main part of the school, which is where the majority of the students spend their livelihood and their, their time there, is not accessible for handicapped accessibility. So that was the second goal. The third goal that was mentioned was to create a common space area for Pocatello High School, which does not presently exist. And that exists at Century High School, that exists at, at Highland High School to a certain extent. But in conjunction with creating a common space area, to also try to tie that back to the inadequacy that we have in the cafeteria area. As you know, where we have a thousand students or possibly thirteen hundred students at Pocatello High School, that cafeteria downstairs in the basement cannot accommodate all the students there at the school, because it is very small in size. And so trying to find a way to, to improve the overall cafeteria environment there with a connection between a common space that does not exist at, at Pocatello High School. That was the third goal. The fourth one was to bring a greater identification to the administrative area. Where is the front of the school at Pocatello High School? Now, we who are native Pocatelloans who may have gone to Pocatello High School, we know where the front of the school is, but not everyone in Pocatello is, is from Pocatello. And so creating, creating a greater awareness of where you come into the school, one door, the other there to the front of that, was also another issue that we want to address and to improve the overall administrative functioning of that area. And then lastly, the fifth goal was to provide additional and improved instructional space to Pocatello High School. I went to Pocatello High School, many of you may have done so as well. Most of the classrooms there are less than seven hundred square feet. And so in today's day and age, that is a standard that is probably substandard in regard to instructional space. And so in addition to creating additional and improved instructional space, one of the other aspects that we had that we just went through was our secondary boundary revision, if you will, where we realign those battery, boundaries, excuse me. And this year, we added approximately a hundred new students to Pocatello High School. And we estimate within the next two years, it will be up somewhere around thirteen hundred students at Pocatello High School. So this additional instructional space will be very timely to the overall functionality of the educational environment at Pocatello High School. As we revisited those goals and we talked about things, as I mentioned, there were a lot of ideas that were expressed. Some of the key points that came out of that discussion were to preserve the historic integrity of Pocatello High School. I think that that's a concern that each and every one of us share and, and value with Pocatello High School. When we look back on previous projects, such as the addition of what we call Unit Three or the palace area there, the new gymnasium and the upper mezzanine area there, there's a lot of time and thought that went into that design concept to make sure that that building looked and felt as if it had been there for a hundred years. And in fact, it's been surprising, as we have had previous class reunions, of how some people have said, wow, I don't even remember being in this part of the school before. And they didn't recognize that, that, that new building there that was built, what, not quite twenty years ago or somewhere around there, is actually a new building and not part of the old Pocatello High School. So we are very sensitive of that, and that came out loud and clear in our discussion with Homo Architects. Another key point was that, one of the things that's a little bit different maybe in today, today's construction with buildings and school buildings, is that, that we have to look at more flexible instructional space. Meaning that we just don't make one room for one purpose and that's it. That we look at designing a space that can be used for, for multiple different aspects. And so, for example, when we talked about science or math, we talked about, well, they could be science and math, you know, a number of years, and then maybe the math classrooms could become something else. Maybe they become English or another, another subject area. Or they could be used for dual purposes during, throughout the school year. So we talked about instructional and flexible space there. Let's see, and then another key point, and maybe I'll just end with this one here, is that there was a great sentiment and, and strong feeling that, that Pocatello High School is a very unique building to our community and that we want to preserve that. And even though that there are new and modern designs that can be mixed and matched in with old architecture, that there was still an overwhelming feeling that within the building and this new design, that, that they wanted it to still feel like old Pocatello High School, even though it might be new construction. That they didn't want to modernize it so much that it, that it created a misfit, if you will, or, or a way where you go from one part of the building and you come into that newer part of the building there, that they felt like they were entering into a different school. They wanted to preserve that, that feeling and that pride that, that exists in Pocatello High School. So those were some of the key points and the goals that were mentioned in addition to all the other comments and, and discussions that we had there. Our next meeting is anticipated for January eighteenth. And they will be coming back with some of their design concept and with some of the discussions that we left them with and, and share with us, what they've been able to come up with in, in regard to instructional space and how to make some of this work out on paper, not just in our minds of how we would like to see these goals be met. So with that, I'll turn it over for questions that you may have or discussions that you may want to have amongst yourself as support.
Well, I visited Pocatello High School today and I toured a bunch of different areas and as part of our training and ideas, as part of our regularly scheduled school visits. And I know they have, I think it's the vice principal's daughter's, it's handicapped, but she goes to school there with her mother. And, and there was a teacher who came in there that day, or today, too, who came in and said, you need to fix this outside space between the two buildings, because we're all going to fall down. I mean, they were talking about the weather and, you know, and how she's panicked about her daughter, who's using a walker, you know, and I just, and I thought about our real need to do some ADA things and to connect those buildings and make it safer for kids like we have at our others, you know. And it just was reiterated in my mind, the importance of, of what we're trying to do there, you know. And I, and I saw firsthand some of the issues there. And it just was another testament to me that, of what we're doing. Well, and, you know, for me, one of the other things is, when we had the meeting with Homo before, I sat with people who teach science and physics at Pocahay and the limitations of those rooms. They can't really do experiments very well. They don't have any way to vent fumes out of, or a little fan that, you know, is there for, for whatever. But there are bigger issues in terms of science labs and, and availability. We live in a time when those kinds of classes are so important and to give our, our students opportunities to, you know, to experience a broader range. Also saw, I don't know, it would give me claustrophobia to be in some of those rooms and try to do some of the things that are happening in.
things that are happening in some of them. So, and then, well, the other part is, I love that old school, but it wasn't built to have a lot of technology in it. So, having access to more electrical outlets and that sort of thing. There's a lot of things that are needed, and more in some particular classes than others. So, the addition of classroom space, it's at the bottom of our list of five things, but to me, it's one of the things that is really important.
Well, and, you know, with times, times have changed, and needs of kids have changed, and needs in the teaching field have changed. And I, for one, love Pocatello High School, you know, and I think the architecture and everything of the building, it's unique and beautiful. And I think we all have felt that way. And yet, we still have to address some of the current issues that we face there, too. And that's what they do all around the country, you know. That's what they had to do with Boise High School, that's what they've had to do with a lot of schools we toured, because there are differing needs now that you have to, you can't just ignore, you know. So, I just think JD and I got a dose of that today, a big dose of that, so.
Well, and nobody there is wanting to abandon the school to have something different. They appreciate it, but they do look forward to the opportunity to have more accessible spaces, and opportunity to explore education in a wider range than what they can do in the spaces they have.
Well, and I think we have a faction that really thinks we should just do away with Pocatello High School, you know, and build a new school, you know. And so, I don't know, you know, it's kind of hard to balance, and yet, I would, I can't imagine that the people in this community would ever want to tear that.
I don't think so.
I just can't imagine that, you know. Or I've heard of to be used for a civic center or different things, but then, nobody, you know, I, there's nothing that's come up that would ever work, and I just think. I saw the kids in the hall today, sat in the hall as they changed classes, and the hallways were, um...
A bit narrower.
Yeah, they're narrower, and so the kids were closer. And I said to the vice principal, I think this is why there's such a great spirit of Pocahay pride here, because these kids are close. I mean, that basically sounds silly, that may sound silly, but, you know, they weren't spread out all over. They were close, and they were walking together and talking together, and I thought, there is a real pride here. And I think that was part of it, I truly do.
Part of it's also an enforced kind of courtesy to one another.
Right.
You have to be kinder. We have the privilege of having an exchange student in our home, and he just loves being at Poki, and that's one of the things he really likes, is people look out for one another, so.
So that was just, I just thought, it was funny that that was our tour, you know, today of all these. You know, it was very timely, because a part of me was really thinking, oh, do we need this new science area? Do we need this other new building and everything? And then, when I went in there, and I toured all the science classrooms, and math, and English, and a whole bunch of others, but it's sad when we can't offer the same science curriculum in that high school, because they don't have the facilities to do the experiments that Highland and Century can. You know, so that's not equal in our district at this time, because they can't do certain things because they don't have that.
And I guess I come at this from a little different perspective, too. Having lived in other parts of this country and in England, and I know, I mean, you could not convince anybody at Oxford or Cambridge to tear down their buildings, they probably have to update them. I went to Yale Divinity School, they had to update some of their buildings there, and part of it has to do with ADA. But it gets accomplished, but the structures are still there. And there are things that I would absolutely be heartsick about if they decided to tear down about some of the places I've been to school. I took classes at Boston College, they had some really old buildings on Boston College campus, decided they need to renovate, but the structure's still there, and they changed some things internal to those buildings. So, you know, we have a treasure, and I would hate to see it go.
Yeah, there's a history there that needs to be maintained, and all over the world, they can do that. And I'm sure with some effort, we can do it here.
I think that one thing that has been exciting to me, and probably the same to you, is that there have been a lot of different ideas expressed in regard to this project. And I think that what is important for us to keep in mind is that there's never a bad idea. You know, every thought and every opinion, every expression is welcome, but we have to work for the common good of what's best for the school and what's best for Pocatello High School. So, I think that...
And still try to meet some other things. I mean, like...
Sure.
I, you know, well, the city has thrown a few things our way that make some of the structural pieces a bit more challenging.
Well, and, you know, this may be an appropriate time to talk about this, because there has been some comment in relation to the school district not working with the city of Pocatello, or various agencies. And that's totally unfounded, that's totally inaccurate. We, well before we even put this out for bid, talked with city officials, talked with the mayor's office, visited with those who are acquainted with these types of things, who have jurisdiction over these types of approvals. And while we haven't fleshed out every single detail, we have talked with them very openly, and they've talked with us very openly, in regard to what the expectations, what they would require for certain things. And yes, we haven't worked out every little minutia and every detail that would happen in regard to this project, and it's not appropriate for us to do it at this point in time, because we're not at that point in the progress of this project. But when that time comes, we will be there, and we will visit with the appropriate parties, and they will visit with us, as they have indicated that they would, and we'll make this work. So, we're excited that we have good partners with the city and the county, and with other groups there, that we've been able to have this good type of relationship. So we'll make that happen.
You know, and I remember being at one of those first meetings, and talking with the city on what we wanted to do, and then when they found out we have this big whatever it is underneath. Yeah, some kind of big pipe thing or something.
Storm in sewer lanes, yes.
Well, I was impressed, because they had their city engineers or something who knew what the problem, and they were trying to help us figure out a way to do it. You know, everybody there was trying to figure out, how can we make this happen? And they wanted us, they really were helpful in trying to, like, if we all put our heads together, we can find a way to do this. You know, and it was a great, it was a great meeting where we worked together, so.
All right. So, keep in mind December eighteenth, if you would please, and we'll see what this next step brings to us.
Eighteenth, nineteenth.
Friday.
The nineteenth is a Saturday.
All right.
All right, and now you're gonna talk about the capital improvement program.
I am, and I'll try to be brief. I know that there are others who would like to make some comment, and most of you have been through this process before. We have spent a considerable amount of time going through our capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty nineteen, or, yeah, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And this is a list of the members of the different, that serve on that committee there, that hasn't really changed over the last number of years. We're appreciative of all those who sit on this committee, including two members of our board, who give their input, and listen to some of the comments that are made there, so you have a better idea of what is happening. We go through a timeline that looks similar to this. We start very early in the process, July through September, trying to work through that thick book of replacement schedules, to determine how we're going to prioritize, and even reprioritize, many of the things that happen on those schedules there. In October, we send out the information to our building administration. You know, they've only been in school a couple of months, and here, we're hitting them about projects that are happening for the following year during the summer. But that's how early we have to be able to do this, in order to get the bidding out there, and to get some of these projects done. We only have a two-month to two-and-a-half-month window in the summer, that we have to make this all happen for our kids and our schools, and to make sure our buildings are ready. So, it's a fairly lengthy process, but it's a planned-out one. And then you can kind of see there, taking this all the way to the board in December, January, and then getting through our bidding, and setting everything up, January through April. Here's our revenue picture, you've had an opportunity to look at this. Our single largest source of revenue is from a school plant facility levy, which is a ten-year levy, that we have had in our district now, going on over sixty years. And we're very appreciative of our patrons, who have supported that levy there, because that allows us to use these funds, and for these funds to be dedicated solely for equipment and for renovation in our various schools, and not have to come from the general operations of the district. And so that's just short of six million dollars there. We have state lottery funds and maintenance match, which is seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that we get from year to year, and that fluctuates up or down. And then our state bus depreciation, our dedicated bus funds to use for the purchase of busing. We have a beginning fund balance, which is a little bit larger than normal, and partially that was larger than normal, because we had four-and-a-half million dollars set aside there for this Pocatello High School project, in this year's budget, that we will roll forward into next year's budget. And so overall, about fourteen point three million dollars of resources. This is just a pie chart that shows you the significance of our school plant facility levy. Without that, boy, that pie would shrink up big time. Here's our estimated expenditures. This first section is what we call our required or maintenance of effort, meaning that this is, this is the nuts and bolts of our school facilities maintenance, right here. This is what three point three million dollars goes to our replacement schedules, which are, is roofing, asphalt, restroom, carpeting, HVAC repair, et cetera. Those are the things that have to be done, so that our students and our schools and our staff can function properly and learn properly. You'll see just a little over three hundred thousand dollars for the various departments, for equipment and furniture in the schools that takes place there. This is just a copy of the replacement schedules, and you can see, just by kind of going down there, that carpeting and tiles, just under a half million dollars this next year, a pretty sizable amount going into that. Also, a category that we haven't had a lot into in regard to tennis courts, we do have some tennis court repairs that we'll make to Pocatello High School, which would be a complete resurfacing and refinishing there at Pocatello High School, and then crack seal and patching, and blending that back in at both Century and Highland High Schools. Heating, ventilation, air conditioning, we probably have four times that need out there in the schools, but there's only so much that we can get done in the summer, in a small window of time, and so, that's about all that we can do right there. And then we're looking at doing some lighting, and that's primarily in Green Acres Elementary School. We did that at Lewis and Clark this last year, remember, we put in new suspended ceilings and did new lighting, very similar project happening at Green Acres this coming year. And then roofing, a little over a couple hundred thousand dollars there. And then the other large category is technology. We're a very technology-dependent district, our students benefit from technology, and we spend upwards of probably three to four million dollars towards technology, between instruction and various sources that we have there that goes to support that. This just kind of represents our school plant replacement schedules, over the past, say, twenty years or so, and the large fluctuations that you see there in those mid-years in that graph, are because we actually use school plant facility dollars to purchase and to construct New Horizon Alternative School, and also to renovate Alameda Middle School there. So that's why you see those dips during some of those years. These are some of the additional major projects, I just want to bring a few of them to your attention. First of all, here at the education center, you know how cramped it gets here, back in the food service area, the transportation area, et cetera. Two years ago, I believe it was, we bought a piece of property that we've been trying to purchase for about fifteen years, and we're able to successfully obtain that property, and we're looking at expanding the bus parking lot area there, which will actually give us more employee parking, and allow us to make some good improvements there, especially in areas in the winter, when we have high snow, and we have big piles of snow, when we don't already, when we already don't have places to park our buses sometimes. So, that will happen this coming summer. You'll see there, the third line item down, the new addition and renovation of Pocatello High School. We have five million dollars set in the budget, we added a half million dollars of this next year's budget to that four-and-a-half million dollars that we had set aside there. At Century High School, this is phase three of the outdoors facility committee that was met, I don't know how many years ago, probably five, maybe six years ago, when we met and discussed that. And that is to resurface the track at Century High School, and to provide some outdoor lighting there, five hundred and fifty thousand. And then, I talked about the Green Acres Ceiling and Lights Project, which is a hundred thousand, and some various other projects there. The last item on there, I just want to draw to your attention, are whiteboards, where we put together a budget of about sixty thousand. We have, at the elementary level, approximately less than fifty whiteboards to complete all thirteen elementary school whiteboards. And at the secondary level, both middle school and high school, we have about a hundred and thirty whiteboards overall to finish, changing out and exchanging all the old blackboards, chalkboards, whatever you want to call them. I don't know if we, how far that will get us, but we're gonna try to get the majority of that done, and hope we don't finish this coming summer. We'll hopefully wrap up for the final project the following year, so that you're aware that that's gonna be happening. And we're gonna do that in district, if you, just so that you're aware of it. We have about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of interior and exterior exhibits there, some required maintenance items that we set aside every year, and that should balance the budget for this following year. This is just a list of some of the various improvements, and some of the different locations that we've talked about there. And our sinking fund reserve will be sitting just short of four million dollars, if our projections hold true, for this following year. And again, none of this would be possible, or it would not be possible, to the extent that it is in our district, without the support of our community for this school plant facility levy. We are very proud in the Pocatello Chubbick School District to recognize that our facilities are well-maintained, especially if you have an opportunity to go out of city and see some of the other districts that aren't as fortunate as ours, so we're grateful for that. Any questions from the board? All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, and the next item of business is to review our board committees and our posting locations and meeting times, and that's your question.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much. And I, too, will be somewhat brief, we'll have an opportunity to discuss this, these items further at your next meeting, and today, you can provide us some input. We actually introduced a few of these items to you at our board retreat back in September, October, somewhere in there. And we talked about what is a board committee, what's an administrative committee, what is a citizens or community committee, and then we looked at a couple as well, which aren't necessarily board responsibilities, or board-directed or administrative committees even. And so, I put together, Ms. Johnson and I have put together this list. We did have some input from Mrs. Amy White, from our, who's our legal counsel, Anderson Julian Hall. And I just present this to you today, for you to consider. You've had an opportunity to look at it ahead of our meeting today, and you can see board committees, that would be, the recommendation would be to maintain calendars, the SIP, Long Range Planning Curriculum Committee. And then the administrative committees are those that are delegated to me, and I then can appoint a designee, as you could see, various directors would be in charge of those committees. They would report back to me, and then we would bring the board updates from those various committees. to me, and then we would bring the board updates from those various committees, boundary, budget, instructional technology, safety, textbook, and wellness insurance, or we call the WIC.
Some of the names need to be updated.
Okay.
Linda Funk has retired.
Oh, yes, so we'll make that change as we receive those retirements or resignations with the, the various representatives from teacher groups or Pocatello Education Association.
And I wondered about the status of the Head Start Policy Council. Having circled on that, what is the responsibility of the board in this regard, because we're pretty directly involved with Head Start?
And I've asked Mrs. Crane to, she's had a number of visits with Kathy Bray, our director of that program, and maybe Mrs. Crane, if you wouldn't mind coming forward and just talking to us a little bit about this, the Head Start Committee.
We had that discussion right before the break, and so now I have to refresh my memory, but we believe that, we know that it's, can be a hardship, you know, to have to go for those hours to that policy council, so we asked Kathy Bray what, what absolutely needed to be reported to the board. So what we can do is if we use the work session, we can use the work session and have some opportunity then for some discussion and some reflection from the board, and probably more effectively use that as a time rather than having the board, you know, they're always invited to go, and, but that can satisfy the Head Start regulations there.
Okay, so we can meet it. I just know that having done it, and I know Paul's been doing it recently, there's a plus to going and meeting those people and kind of knowing their investment in the program too, so, but it is a lot of extra time.
I think that if, if someone wants to do that, that is absolutely, would be welcomed, but we tried to make it be an option if that doesn't, if people end up spread to them.
Well, as long as we're meeting our obligation.
And we will, and we, we figured we can meet that obligation that way by using that as, and she will more frequently come to the, the work session to present anything that, where she would need some type of feedback.
And then...
And the Ed Foundation?
Yes, Ed Foundation, and that, that is a committee that is strictly those who have provided input outside of the district, and then the Pocatello Community Charter School Liaison, as you, as the board is well aware, they present to the board your annual submissions in regard to academic achievement, as well as their budget, and so the board has the oversight there generally, but not specific to have a committee or members assigned to that committee. So whereas we have it listed as liaison, really, again, you are the oversight or governing committee or board of their, their board that they have within the charter.
It didn't used to be the way it is now. They had someone coming annually to do, and we needed to be part of that at the time, but I don't think we had to do that.
Whereas now they are their LDA or Local Education Agency, they have a lot of their own direction that is provided by their board, but again, this board provides the complete oversight or governance of that.
Okay.
Next up, you'll see proposed posting locations, and we revisit this just based upon, really, the electronic age, and we utilize our district website, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, those various media outlets, and what we are proposing is rather than go from one end of, the north end of Chubbe to the southwest corner of Pocatello to the two public libraries, we think that time is, could be more better utilized, more effective, just to post on the electronic communications. And then the change in the work session time, just to accommodate some work schedules, whether it be our patrons or our board, and we would ask the board to consider a change from the 1:30 start time on work sessions to 12 o'clock start time.
I had asked before, I just met with the meeting that I have on the second Tuesday of the month at noon, but they had agreed to change it to the third Tuesday of the month, so don't you dare do anything about that. So, so that will work for you, then?
I made it work.
Okay.
When we reorganize the board, you can take action on all of these items next week.
I just wondered if anybody else had problems. I guess the other worry that I have though with making all of it electronic is there needs to be something that is not electronic so that people have access that don't have.
Right, locations, and one would be the courthouse, the Manic County Courthouse and the district office here. Thanks for mentioning that. It wasn't all digital or electronic.
So that's your last?
That's it, just one item for me to mention.
Okay. Now we've reached the point in our meeting, and we appreciate all of you who have come and have waited patiently through our meetings, and for items that are on the agenda, we have to have those comments at the end of our meeting. So we are, have reached the point for public comment on our meeting, and you needed to fill out a request form, and I think I have four here tonight, or today, it's not night, to speak to us, and so I will call you just in the order, I have them here. I do need to state, I'll just give you some of the directions that are guidelines to go with public comment at our meetings, and that, number one is that you're limited to five minutes per person, and is somebody gonna, are you gonna?
I can go get those, or I can take it from the computer.
Okay, and Renee will let you know usually how much time you have or something, if you look towards her when you're speaking, she can, she can signal you to how much time you have. And we have a large group of people all coming pretty much for the same thing, we've asked that you kind of have speakers or that you don't keep repeating the same thing somebody else is speaking, but I don't see that that will be a problem today. Let's see, I'm thinking if there's anything, oh, board members, so as not to get in, in long discussion back and forth, board members usually don't respond, don't respond at meetings on public comment that you give, but we can refer you or somebody will follow up with you, right, Superintendent Hell, that's how, somebody will follow up after, after the fact with that. Anyway, if you exceed your five minutes and you hear the gavel, that means your time is, your time is up. So we'll go ahead and begin, and, and Mrs. Tara, she will hold the cards up, show them. And so the first person I have down, and, oh, when you come, you can sit here, you can stand there, but we ask that you give your name and your address, anything else?
Your reason.
And your reason for speaking. So the first comment, our person that I have is Steve Robert McCurdy, if you would like to come forward and show your comments.
Thank you very much. I'll try to be fast, my comments are five-and-a-half minutes, so I'll talk in order to fit it into that time. My name is Stephen Robert McCurdy, my address is 1354 West at Jordan Hill Drive in South Jordan, Utah. Chairman Crainer and fellow members of the Pocatello-Chubbe School Board, thank you for your time, for your willingness to listen to the concerns of Save Pocatello High School who I'm here representing. We are here to address the path that has been chosen for the building of an addition and a remodeling of Pocatello High School. I am a filmmaker and a board member of the Bozart Academy in Provo, Utah, private academy that teaches classical arts and architecture, and teaches architecture as if it's an art, which it is. I was a member of the Pocatello High School class of 1978. I'm the son of Dean and Melba McCurdy, a resident of Pocatello, Idaho. I have two brothers who are current residents of Pocatello. My father was a graduate of the Pocatello High School class of 1929, thirty-nine? Nope, twenty-nine? Thirty-nine? Yeah. I, I must have both of these dates wrong then. And my eighty-nine-year-old mother was a school treasurer and graduate of the class of?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. In 1976, for my sophomore year, my mother painted my room red, Poki red and Poki blue. And just a few years ago, at the age of eighty-seven, she found herself on a cold winter night on the lawn at Pocatello High School at the lighting of the refurbished neon Indian sign, giddy as a teenager, singing "We're loyal to you, Poki High." It's because of our loyalty to Pocatello High School that I am here tonight. I'm here to fight for the preservation of Pocatello High School, its historic and traditional architecture, and its remaining and enduring beauty. Over the years, Pocatello High School has been blind and mistreated. In the 1970s, the windows of Pocatello High School were boarded up in a most ugly and disparaging way. It was a mistake mitigated only by the school board when recently, or more recently, they chose to restore some of those windows. Today, fans and cables, air conditioners and vents dangle from the remaining board up windows like so much rotting flesh. Electrical boxes and facility pipes and other alien forms now clutter the common areas. Someone has suggested that Pocatello High School will be torn down or closed, that it's no longer needed, and that we need to look to the future. I was happy to hear that many of you believe that that is not the case. That is why, and part of that is, is that we still think that this new addition will cause a great abuse to Pocatello High School, and that's why we started this group. I think we can all agree that Pocatello High School is in need of some repairs, and that we recognize that it needs better ADA accessibility. We're also being told that there's a need for additional classrooms, I believe you, and I'm certain that as a school board that you have good intentions, even if sometimes you're unclear how to proceed. We also desire what is best for Pocatello High School. I'm here today representing over seventeen-hundred petitioners, not only because of Poki pride, but because we disagree with your decision, but because we think we can be of assistance. The real issue before the school board is how does one add new architecture to an old existing building? As the architect and teacher at the University of Notre Dame School of Architecture, Steve Sims, says, "With tactfulness and grace, not rudeness and disrespect." The conceptual plan that has been approved by the school board is all about utility and function. It does not address the deeper needs of Pocatello High School that have tact and grace of its history, its tradition, and its beauty. We need to return Pocatello High School to its former glory, to the day when Pocatello High School was considered the crown jewel. Here's what we are asking. The school board reopen the request for proposals, because we don't believe that the process was fair or open or transparent. That whatever additions are built, that they are architecturally complementary and compatible with the existing structure, that is not the modernist glass and metal structure shown in the paper, that whatever is designed adds beauty to Pocatello High School. Third, that the conceptual drawings be submitted to the Historic Preservation Commission and the Pocatello Planning for Approval, awarding of the, before awarding of the contract. And I disagree with what Bart had said about what had taken place. Fourth, that an outside expert or an authority such as Steve Sims, Richard Cameron, or any number of other individual prominent classicists be hired to consult and to help add new architecture to an old building. That is the question, how to add new architecture to an old building. I know this will be a hard task. Pocatello High School has always had heart, and in the words of our school song, you know, "We are, we are fighting for Pocatello High School." To the seventeen-hundred people that have signed the petition, we are fighting for you, members of the school board, we are also fighting for you. Together, we can save Pocatello High School. If you will work with us, we think that we can be of great help. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come before you, and those are my time, I guess it's out, and, but I would like to just give you the, the petition of the seventeen-hundred names, and also I would like to give you a book, it's called "The Future of the Past." I've also given you comments. I would only make the request that if you would donate this to the library at Pocatello High School upon the completion of a deparusing material.
Okay, next up we have Mr. John Hoffman.
Hello, Chairman Crainer and fellow members of the school board members, my name is John Hoffman, I'm a local businessman here in town, I have a degree in secondary education. I got my degree here at Iowa State University, graduated from Pocatello High School, I did my student teaching at Pocatello High School, and then I got a degree in economics and, and opened a couple of businesses here in town, a business called Big John's Mini Storage and a company called The Wonder Mill, which we manufacture grain mills and ship grain mills around the country. So I'm a Pocatelloan by heart, been here my whole life, my family went to school here, my children went to Pocatello High School, my grandchildren are continuing education here, and I want you to know that I love this, I love Pocatello and I love this school district, and I appreciate, I come here in no way to be confrontational with you, and I love the things that you're doing, I appreciate the efforts that you put forth in serving our community, and, and I want you to know that I realize in many ways your job is a thankless job, and, but I do represent a group of people, as we have met, also with this group called Save Pocatello High School, and a bit more, a little bit more on the business side of it, that are concerned of some of, not just with the architectural part of it, a little bit more of the business side. A group of people that, like myself, pay lots of taxes, gladly pay lots of taxes, and I know you don't hear that very often, nobody likes to pay taxes, I don't gladly pay taxes very often, but there are some people that actually gladly pay taxes when it comes to this school district. I actually gladly pay taxes, and I like to support the things that you're doing. I see the things that, I've known Bart my whole life, and I see the things that you're doing, and I, when you talk about, I see some of these graph charts, and I gladly support the things that you're doing. There are many people that do that in this community, instead of coming in and saying, "Why are you spending this, wasting that?" We gladly support what you're doing and appreciate that, but we are also concerned about the things that are happening, and we want those things to be done right, and in a way that we also, as patrons, feel ought to be done. So we do have concerns, and we are concerned about some of the things. One of our biggest concerns is we want to make sure that our money's being spent well. We feel like with the growth that's going on at Pocatello, and the many things that are happening, with a temple coming in here, and business growth, and the things that we feel are very positive, that keeping Pocatello High School as one of the gemstones in Pocatello High School is important. There's people that come and, and with, and we feel this is really important at this time to make sure we maintain the integrity of Pocatello High School, so one of our biggest concerns is, is maintaining that as business people, so that people will come here and go, "Wow, Pocatello is an amazing place," along with all the things that are going on, and want to make sure that's part of it. One of the big concerns that we've talked about, and I've left each of you a list of questions that have been submitted to you, those are not just my questions, so please, if some of those are, if you feel attacked on those, they're not just my questions, those are questions that have been submitted by many, and you can read through those forty questions, but there are a lot of many questions that we've left for you to ask, and we hope that maybe you can address some of those later. But one of the biggest concerns is, as we've seen the proposal and we've heard, is that if this structure has to be taken down in an emergency situation because of the pipes underneath, what kind of cost is that going to be to our community? If that's an emergency that comes up, if that happens more than one year in a row, if that happens two years by way of an emergency, can we afford those costs? Many of these questions, we want you to know that we support you, we want you to know that we want this to be, we have serious concerns, and there are many people that are concerned, this is not just a few people, and as business people in the community, we support you, but we want this, we want communication, and we want support, and we want to have input on this, so we, we are asking you to make sure and include us in that, we don't feel, up till now, that in a way we had inadequately had the opportunity, and we say that just by example, as my last comment, in, in twenty-four hours, we were able to have a thousand people give comment compared to what we feel ninety comments in a seven-day period on, on the, on the project that was, that you put forth. So we just feel like we want input, and we hope that you'll give us that, grant us that ability as business people, and people who support you and spend money in this community, we want to continue to do that. And so we, again, thank you for your, for your, what you're doing, and please let us be a part of it, and please take our comments seriously, and the things that we have input, and let us help. Thank you very much.
William James McCurdy.
My name is William James McCurdy, 2946 South Fifth Avenue here in Pocatello. In case you didn't guess, Steve McCurdy and I are more closely tied in the fact that we both like the Beatles. My name is William James McCurdy, I was born in Pocatello in 1947, DeJedion Melba Dean McCurdy. I... I received the bulk of my elementary, junior high, and high school education in Pocatello. I not only have graduated from Idaho State University, but also I am a semi-retired lecturer in philosophy at ISU. Currently, I'm an adjunct instructor in philosophy. Although I did not graduate from Pocatello High School, I'm a proud member of the second graduating class of Highland High School, nineteen sixty-five. Both my parents did. One of the most significant teachers in my life, Beverly Griffin, first grade, John Greenleaf Whittier Elementary School, who made an impact not only on my life, but numerous others, graduated from Pocatello High School also in the class of thirty-nine with my father, Dean McCurdy. Both of them were loyal supporters of the class of thirty-nine and met way up into this current millennium with members of their class. And I had an occasion to sometimes meet with some of those people in that class. Though both Ms. Griffin, as I still affectionately call her to this day, and my father have passed away, part of my reason for being here is to be a voice of the democracy of the dead. Since the nineteen-sixties, the strip mollification of America has damaged her cities and towns from the eastern seaboard to the western coast. This damage has occurred both by commission and omission. Commissioned by bloodless business development with little or no sense of beauty. Omissioned by allowing the decimation and dilapidation of once flourishing centers of culture, commerce, and community. The city of Pocatello wisely decided to designate its pioneering corps as a historic Old Town Pocatello, with an eye to preserve and restore that heart. Sadly, Old Town Pocatello, as well as elsewhere in the city, has lost many of its most significant buildings, some by unfortunate accidents since the fire in the chief theater during the effort to restore it to its earlier grandeur, and some by intent such as the inexcusable demolition of the Bannock Hotel. If any building in Old Town Pocatello has pride of place, it is Pocatello High School. As a proud member of the second graduating class of Highland High School, a school I remember fondly with fine friends I made and the good education I received there, I nonetheless have always admired the flagship high school of Pocatello, not only for its seniority, but also for its handsome architecture. When visitors come to Pocatello, I often drive them by Poki High School, or take them for a stroll by there during the monthly Old Town Art Walks. Typically, those visitors remark at what a fine elegant facade, and not infrequently, they add that they're surprised that such an old building hasn't been replaced by a more utilitarian structure. Of course, the demolition of Poki High School is not an issue here, but there are real concerns regarding the additions and alterations being presented. The photograph that they had in the newspaper this last summer was not very encouraging. Some of those proposals involve additions that are incongruous with the existing building. The glass cage connector between the two main buildings is completely out of place and aesthetically displeasing, as rebar would be on the door of the Capitol Building in Boise. Old timers may recall when two fine buildings catty-corner from each other on the corner of Center Main, the Pioneer Building and the Sears Building, were modernized and improved by covering their exteriors with siding. Many years later, that siding was torn off, and those aesthetic travesties were in part rectified. Subsequently, not a few townspeople asked, "Why would anyone have covered up such a fine-looking structure with metallic siding?" I am here as a native son, appealing to the school board to reconsider the specific plans it has made for the appendages at Pocatello High School. I have no problem with the intentions that are most general, to help make Pocatello High School better, to serve the educational needs of Pocatellans, students, and teachers. The devil, however, is in the details, and it seems that it's likely that there's a few things devil is lurking there. It is not merely in the architectural incongruity of some of the proposed additions, but also in the process by which they were brought to the public. The excessively narrow window given for public comment violated the spirit, if not the letter, of central tenets of representative government, those of transparency and consent of the government. I completely understand some having rightly commented on safety concerns, but safety concerns need not preclude saving the fine heritage of Pocatello High School. To think otherwise is to commit the fallacy of false choice. Let us not be historical and cultural mayflies. I thank the school board for allowing me to address my concerns.
We have two more.
I would just like to ask that, given that I was incapable of reading the entire two of the documents, that the copy that I have provided for you, you actually added to your record.
Thank you. We have two more. Mr. Jerry Myers. Are you in speaker?
I am really, Jerry Myers, what am I supposed to say? Six thirty-five South Seventh, Pocatello, Idaho. And I'm just speaking as a citizen at this point, as all of you know, as a firm we had submitted, and I fully respect and acknowledge the decision that was made by the board. And I think that what I would like to suggest, as I look at the comments, I've read many of the comments, and I've looked at some of the information that's been discussed by the district, I think what I see is an information gap. I think that, as I also looked at the SIP committee and at the committee in the initial meetings, I saw a lot of district staff, the board members, you're all citizens, I understand that fully, but I would, from my experience with many other projects, having some involvement from those outside the forest sometimes is very good. One, so that you can get ideas that come from outside, but also you have individuals from outside of the forest who can help you sell the project, to help the public understand what really is being built. There's a couple of entities. One is the Preservation Commission, which has been discussed. While you probably would not be able to have formal participation there, there are individuals who, from a design standpoint, can help through that process. Old Town Pocatello also has done an extensive amount of work in the renovations of downtown in creating some conceptual ideas that include athletic facilities for Pocatello High School, that include pedestrian accessways and plazas that would be interactive between the high school and the community as well. So I would urge you to reach out and take advantage of some of the opportunities, some of the passion that you've heard here with some of the individuals that have spoken, allowing them to be engaged and better understand where you're at. As an example, the glass box that is shown, unless a home architect spent considerably more time getting information and meeting with staff and those sorts of things, which really wasn't available early on in the process, rightly so, not to take all of the time of your administration at this high school. But that was a first glance at what could happen. And so there's been a lot of concern about what's happening in that design. So I think that the more you can illustrate to the public what you really are doing, where you're at in that, are at in that design process, I think that it would help considerably in everybody understanding how early you are in the process, what design considerations you're considering, and where you really are at, so that a pretty picture doesn't become the straw man that ultimately ends with a project being less than what it might be otherwise. But I appreciate all you do as well, and your time and energy in what you do, and support you in those things. Thank you. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them, but...
Thank you for your suggestions. Appreciate that. Our last comment is Mr. Kay Jenkins.
I just have to move it up. My name is Kay Jenkins. I am a teacher at Pocatello High School. I have been for thirty-two years. I'm the old man at the school. I started when I had hair, and it was brown. Anyway, as I've read some of the concerns in the newspaper from different groups, and as I've seen what is taking place at Pocatello High School, and being a history teacher, I was a drama teacher for twenty-two years now, I've been teaching history for twenty-four. Together, that makes thirty-two somehow. Anyway, my concern has always been, everybody's saying, "Let's restore it to its grandeur and to its perfect time." I am confused because the perfect time, I don't know which time we're talking about. Since the school actually opened in eighteen ninety-one, is that the perfect time? Or is it the addition from nineteen twelve that added the diamond-up gym and the foreign language classes? Or is it the nineteen thirty-three addition that added the wings on and created more classrooms? Or is it the thirty-nine addition that added the second building and the facade? That's when it came into place. Now, somewhere in the twenties, they took it from the stone like the Stanlott House and bricked the front of it. Two years later, they bricked the back of it, so that then it was covered with brick. Then there was the nineteen sixty-eight addition, which added in the drama room, which I was grateful for, and the choir and band room, as well as home ec and some art classes. Then there was the two thousand five addition that added in what we call the palace, the new gym. So I'm confused, where is the splendor and when was it? Because it's had seven different remodels at least. And so as we look at the glass covering, I've seen that, it will incorporate that cool facade from nineteen thirty-nine, and it will also add another wing, which we need desperately, especially with the growth that's hit it for the community. If the families at the FBI alone are in the school district, there's no room in the inn. And so I can see where it needs to be remodeled. I looked at the architectural plans and looked like it was consistent with what had taken place. Yes, we've lost some of the ability to carve the soapstone and some of those details. The interesting thing is, the days of glory were not actually to make Pocatello High School look beautiful, they were to put people to work during the Great Depression because the economy had crashed in Pocatello as well as in Boise. So all of that decorative was not put because the school needed it, it was because Pocatello needed the jobs for people to work. So I stand here saying, "We need this stuff." I do remember the remodel on the inside from eighty-two, which added plug-ins to our rooms, which was awesome, so that my refrigerator could run and my computer. We've had difficulties adding in the internet because my walls are two feet thick, so when it was out in the hallway, I had no service in my room. It was awkward. Anyway, so there are things that are being needed, especially those classrooms that will be centered around STEM and with new facilities and technologies that we are desperate for at Pocatello High School. I love the school. I didn't graduate there. My kids did. All five. So I love Pocatello High School. I'll die there when I retire. I mean, that's what we always say, you die when you retire. Anyway, I will retire from there. It's been my only place, and I love it. And I am in one of the original rooms, which is so cool as a history teacher, because it took place in my classroom. So I would love to see a remodel, but like I said, which days of glory are we looking at? Because we've had set. So I thank you for your time. I appreciate the work that you're doing. I think the architectural plans have a long way to go, probably. There'll be more input, but I'm excited to have kids inside. As I had a room in the other building, I fell every year on the ice walking to the two buildings. It would be nice to have that enclosed, and to have a place where the students could actually eat lunch besides the stairwells. Thank you.
All right. I think that is all of our comments, and so I guess it is time to just... I thought we will just adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
She's a letter, right? She was kind of hitting by it.
She's a letter. She's a letter.
There you go. And then the other one.
Why I graduated in...
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Dan. See you.
You're looking spiffy and zesty. How do you do that?
He said it once.
Yeah.
I should show.
People like this.
I'm ready.
I should show.
People like this.
I should show.
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 I should show.